So let's go ahead and call the order and roll call. Carrie? She was not possibly not going to be on mute. I'm scared of pushing. You might be on mute, Carrie. One more time, Carrie? We'll circle back there for a little bit and see if she's on. Joe?
Joe, hi, Hebrew.
Great, thanks. Mary?
Mary, please ask D. Marlborough.
Thank you. Sue?
Sue, spell D. Marlborough.
Thank you. Heather?
Heather, summer, Hebrew.
Thank you. Pam?
Yes, Carrie, D. Marlborough.
Great, thank you. Mike? Gabe?
Gabe Martin, Hebrew.
Great, thank you. Eric?
Eric Shevchenko, T. Lewis.
Great, thank you. Pearson?
Pearson, Princeton, Howard.
Great, thank you. I want to circle back to Carrie one more time. Carrie, can you hear me? And then Mike Morris, Hebrew. Do you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Flags in the back.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the public, which stands as one nation under God, equal and just.
Thanks. All right, moves us on to item three, public comment. Can you all bear with me for a moment? D. Bernando, Marlborough, community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and I'll ask Gabe if he could be my timekeeper, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. So at this time, is there anyone present physically that would like to present public comment? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone online that would like to present public comment? Please make yourself digitally known or just say me. All right, I'm getting the left and right from Eric, so I'm going to assume that's a no. Which moves us on to item four, the addition and deletion of any agenda items. I do not have anything to propose for that. Is there anyone on the board that has any addition or deletion items that they'd like to propose for the agenda? Seeing none from anybody present, anybody online? All right, I'm going to say that's a no as well, which moves us on to student representative reports. And we have one student representative available, so Ava, why don't you go ahead and take this?
So this week is our last week of school. We have finals this week, graduation, and for seniors, it's Thursday. For juniors, college applications, and coming up to the academy, the board, and the list. These scores will be back to life then. And then the last thing I just wanted to say is that I really enjoy being here and being prepared and participating. It's been really an learning experience, and I just really appreciate it.
All right. Great, thank you. Then for the chair report. So first, Ram High School hosted its annual Evening of the Arts. I had an opportunity to participate. That was on Thursday, June 1st. It's been a couple of them now. It showcases the many talents of our students, our very talented students. Artwork was displayed all throughout the atrium. There was a number of musical numbers that students performed. There was singing, there was music, I mean, instrument playing. Honestly, all incredibly impressive to me, given that I have not an ounce of artistic talent in my entire body, but so impressed with everything that everybody did. And the only thing I'll say is I also appreciate the community support on this outstanding event. There was a ton of people there. It was, it's almost like going out for the night. It was really enjoyable time and great food, too. So really appreciate all the effort, both to support that as well as everybody that had a hand in putting it on. Really impressive. Next, the High School Spring Sports Award Night is held last Thursday, and that recognized our Ram Spring Sports teams and specifically our champions. That included Rachel Bartalucci, who won the 800-meter Class M state title. Really impressive. Holden Sullivan, who won the Division II State Championship. Incredibly impressive. We also had our entire golf team was the, this year's CCC team champions. And then near and dear to my heart, and I don't, I can't emphasize this enough, we have 147 Ram student athletes being recognized as scholar athletes this year. And I believe that was out of 108? What was it, right? I don't know. I mean, it's an incredibly large percentage of our, our total student athlete population meets the criteria for being considered a scholar athlete. And I want to say that's somewhere in the neighborhood of maintaining a P-plus or better average throughout the timeframe that they're participating in the sports, which is just amazing. And that's incredible time management skills and discipline, both on the field and off, and just can't tell you how impressive and, and I even, you know, I would get a lot of opportunities to brag against other tier, board chairs, because we just don't know each other all that much. But the few that do come in contact with me are going to hear about that.
I think that's something about the person.
Yeah, incredible. That's incredible. So look, as we come to the end of another school year, I'd like to take just a moment and congratulate everyone who contributes to make that possible. This includes the support staff, the teachers, administrators, and administrative staff, bus drivers, coaches, paras, counselors, parent volunteers, student volunteers, my fellow board members, our superintendent, our district taxpayers, who we can't forget, you know, kind of fund this whole endeavor, and anyone else that I might not have mentioned in their proper category. And last but not least, of course, our students. You know, I, for, I had to do this for another reason, but I'll share this information with you because I think it's relevant as we kind of look towards the end of this year and forward towards the next. U.S. News and World Report's last ranking of Ram High Schools was 1,238 out of all public high schools in the nation. And just to give you some context, according to highschools.com, that's out of 33,307 high schools in the United States, which they also put us at 26th in the state of Connecticut out of all, out of all the high schools. As far as the public school review rankings, they rank Ram 53rd out of all 940 schools in Connecticut, whether your middle school, high school, whatever. And that puts us in the top 5% of all the schools in Connecticut. And at the end of the day, it's, it's important to remember that Ram continues to be a very high-performing and respected school in the district. And we set students up for success long after graduation, and I am very confident based on everything that everybody's done from this year that will carry that on over and either sustain or improve that standing as, as we continue forward. Last but not least, you can't take the army out of me. You'd have to get a safety briefing. This is the end of each school year, and that's just something we do. Sorry. First, we're not there yet. There's still a few more days. We have finals. We have a lot of activities going on for promotions and graduation ceremonies and I'm sure celebrations. But I implore everyone, especially our students, to continue the diligence and effort, get through the finals and do your best, and, and continue to make good decisions even after that, that summer. You know, finish up safe and strong. And then, you know, the last thing I'll mention is the summer. We all want to see all our graduating seniors safely out of their next challenge, be it the college, you know, college, the military, the workforce, or whatever other, you know, challenge, challenge they dive into next. And everybody else, we want to see back here safe, rested, and ready for the next year of learning. So enjoy the summer, but please continue to practice effective decision-making that brings you back here safe and in the same or better condition than when you left. At this point, I'm turning it over to item seven, which is the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. I will circle back and echo some of those same sentiments towards the end of my remarks this evening, but I wanted to start with some really greatly exciting news. I was informed last Monday that the district has been awarded a $91,000 technology grant. And I just want to make sure I get this right. The Public Utilities Regulatory Authority awards public educational and governmental programming programming and education technology investment accounts, which has an active that goes with it. The program was established to promote public educational and governmental programs in Connecticut and to fund educational technology initiatives. The $91,000 that Reg. 8 has been awarded is going to be used to purchase the remaining interactive displays that we started to push out, and we've used some board funding, but we were hopeful that we would end up getting some career funding to complete the rollout of switching over from our older technology to smart boards to the interactive displays. I'm super excited. The $91,000 is a significant portion of money, and it's just, it's super exciting for us. And I certainly appreciate the work of everybody that's involved in putting that together. So it happened, it seems like it was a while ago, but it really was, has been since our last meeting with the Ram football team, whoever knows, won the state championship earlier this fall, was actually recognized for their accomplishments and having state capital. A few weeks ago, Dr. Bryce Yeo and I had an opportunity to go and be there as they were introduced as the Connecticut general assembly was coming in session. It was really, it was a neat thing. The entire team was there, and they were recognized by Representative Steve Weir, who also happens to be a grandparent. And again, just an exciting opportunity for the kids and sort of being able to have that recognition. I, too, was a attendance at both the Arts as well as the Spring Sports Awards. And I think it's, you know, we talk about the success and the achievements that we've had and our rankings, and I, I am very proud of that as well. It's one of the things that drew me to want to come to Ram in the first place, because I knew its reputation for quality programming and the success of students. But, you know, one of the things that I think makes us such a phenomenal school district is that we cater to all of the needs of students, right? We, we set them up for strong academic success, but we also have a lot of programming for students that go outside of the classroom, things like fine performing arts, things like, again, strong athletic programs that are very, very competitive across the state, and then clubs and activities that will really teach the whole child. So I, I think that those opportunities, or sorry, those events such as the Giving of the Arts and Sports Awards really are representative of the fact that we really do a great job of the whole child. I, again, I'm going to echo some of the sentiments that you shared, which is to thank all of the teachers and staff here at Ram for the work that they did through the 2023 school year. We certainly faced some adversity and some challenges, and what got us through those adversities and those challenges are the people. It was the staff, it was the students, it was the community. We came together, and when we come together, we are at our strongest. And I just appreciate the work that everybody did to really have been, you know, kind of come out successful at the end of this school year, and appreciate everybody, you know, help that they did welcoming me and getting me acclimated to the district in my first year as superintendent. And I hope that everybody, staff, on the staff, is going to have an opportunity to get some well-deserved downtime over the upcoming summer vacation. And I also want to conclude by congratulating our soon graduates and their families. I went through this last year as a parent of high school graduates, and I know it's, it's, it's an accomplishment of the students, but also their families. We have our eighth grade promotion ceremony on Thursday morning, which I'm excited about, and our graduation on Thursday evening for our high school students. And I would echo those sentiments of what I say to my kids, my own children, is make good decisions. We're not there yet. Be smart, be safe. That's, that's what's going to be most important among them. And that concludes my accomplishments.
All right. Which moves us on to item eight, the approval of the minutes. I think if I remember correctly, we didn't do the individuals. The dual ones, right? All right, so this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the May 15th Board of Education meeting. Thank you. Joe?
Second.
Thank you, Gabe, for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the May 22nd Special Board of Education meeting.
So.
Thank you, Sue. Is there a second? Thank you, Heather. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. Finally, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the June 5th Special Board of Education meeting. Eric, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Heather. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
None? Any opposed? None opposed, that also carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. All right, consent agenda. Approval of the April 2024 Spain trip. Do you want to just give everybody a picture?
Sure. So the only item on the consent agenda for this year is the, is the approval of the overnight field trip for students to go to Spain for next year. As the board recalls, I think it was just our last meeting, actually, when our students came and presented and shared their recent experiences in going over to Spain. And this is just a formal allegation that the board would have to approve the overnight.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and get a motion forward, and if there's any discussion, we'll cover it at that point. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Thank you, Gabe. Is there a second? Thank you, Pearson. Appreciate that. Is there any discussion? I'll just throw out one item that, I'm sorry that I spooked the Spain kit, trip, field trip folks in the last meeting when I asked them to present an argument as to why we should continue this. I have no intention to propose that we don't continue it. I just wanted to hear why. It was so great for you. So my apologies if I scared you, but. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that also passes unanimously. Which brings us to the best part of the night, which is item ten, the student program spotlight. I'll turn it over to you, or it's your best.
So, yeah, I concur with that being the best part of our evening. I'm really, really excited to introduce Paul Bancroft. Paul is our teacher in our, the EMT program, as well as our teachers, our cert class as well. Paul has taught a variety of courses over his tenure here in the district, and this, our EMT program is a very unique program. And I felt that it would be a good opportunity for Paul to enjoy my son and students, and I appreciate everybody coming out on the exam night to come out and talk a little bit about their program and highlight all the good things that are going on to Paul. Come on up, please.
Thank you. So, so I came actually to talk about the kind of extraordinary reactions of one of our students. Before I get to that, I want to get into some background. So like you said, we have an EMT program here. It's kind of unusual. So if you look at the ages of EMTs nationwide, you're 16 and 17-year-old high school kids in this little lip way down here on the left side of the screen. And that's for a couple of reasons. First, most states don't allow you to be from the EMT until you're 18, so it's statutory in most states here for these 18. There's only about five states that allow it. Most of them are on the East Coast, kind of looks back to our, the England and volunteerism sort of history. And the other reason is it's hard. It's really hard. Very a lot of schools have tried and failed to have these EMT programs. I was at a health first teacher convention before we started this. I was talking to a teacher at the special department at another school system, and I said, "We're going to put together an EMT program." And she said, "Don't do it. High school kids can't do that. It's beyond the, can't be done." In a lot of cases, that has been true. A lot of times, struggling in Manchester, it's hard to get a struggle. They typically can only maybe get one kid certified a year with their programs. It's not an issue. So this is a slide to show the students on the first day of their class. And when I say they're on the deep field, these young people sitting here are truly extraordinary. There aren't that many of them in the United States at all. It is easy class, right? Guys? I'm wicked laid back and, you know, just whatever, you know. Eric, did you break my slideshow? This is, this is a difficult class. This, it's a four college-trained course, and it's probably all that more and level difficulty, right, guys? Feedback for some previous years, I'm not going to read them all, but it's hard, harder. There's a larger amount of work. You kind of course, it's much more difficult than a normal class, more assignments, more topics, faster pace, plus attendance, students have to work harder, put more effort in. More detailed graduation content, content was complex and quick. And that pretty much sums it up. That's it. But Ken?
Go ahead, Ben Roll. Oh, come on, video. I'll have to act it out if you can't make it work there. Doesn't look like it's in there.
It's not playing the embedded file.
Yeah, it does give me the option to.
Yeah, right. It worked. I watched it. Right, yeah, it does work. I use it every, but it does, it's a little software for reasons unknown. So the video that you're not going to see is Darien High School. Since the 1970s, Darien High School has had high school EMTs. They run the program out of their high school, and they actually have a garage, and the ambulance is at the high school. And when there were calls during the daytime, the kids would leave their classes, get in the ambulance, and go. It's actually one of the things that inspired me to put one together here, because after all those naysayers, watching what Darien's been doing forever gave me the inspiration. Ellington, a little closer home, does basically the same thing. There are high schools across the street from the firehouse, and the kids just hop in and go. That's all right.
Things in that picture.
All right, so there's actually three classes going on there. It isn't a class, it's three classes. So we have the Ram course. You can flip to the next one. We have the Ram course, which is your standard requirements for Ram, you know, 10 absences a semester, written exam, passing is a 60, passing the course is a 60. But for the ones who want to go and get certified, they have to do some extra stuff, because they have to meet the Department of Health rules. Completely separate rules, has nothing to do with Department of Ed. Department of Health rules, they have to attend 150 hours of instruction or more. There is no such thing as an excused absence. They don't care. You have to be there for 150-plus hours of instruction. You do not get certified, which means these guys can afford to miss half of what a normal student can miss, like about 10 absences a year max. They have to do clinical hours. They have to spend a weekend on auto extrication. They have to get a 75 or better to pass their exam. They have to go through the cycle motor, practical exams. There are seven stations. They have to demonstrate that they can do them pretty much perfectly. CPR, airway, medical assessment, trauma assessment. They have to master all seven stations. They also have to demonstrate to me as the instructor, and here, this is me speaking as an EMS instructor, not a high school teacher. The standards are higher. They have to prove to me they can do everything in the book. And the book is 1,600 pages, and they have to do it all. Excellent, please. And it's not easy. It's not just intellectually difficult. It's not just 10 pages of reading every night, including holidays and weekends. It's also physically challenging. How many times did you guys go to the CPR station? I said it was not right. Do it again and again and again until you're huffing and puffing, right? They have to lift and move 100-pound mannequin around, get it under a stretcher, get it out of a bed, take it up and down the stairs. This is physically and mentally challenging. They have to go to the hospital. They have to spend 10 hours in the emergency department with an hospital. They have to assess and treat 10 actual ER patients in that time. And that's on their own time. They have to spend a Saturday at a firehouse ripping up carcinocanals, honestly. I mean, that's a good thing, except it poured this year, and that, so it wasn't as much fun. But generally, that's a good time. They have to learn how auto extrication is done. Those who are members of their fire department get to actually go hands-on with the tools and do some cutting and ripping. Those are Ram students in the photo. To take their, and our EMT exams, they have to do it in the summer. Their certification exams happen after the course is over, and they have to arrange that on their own. They have to pay for it on their own. If they fail the test the first time, they have to pay for it again. So, you know, it's not easy. But we need them. There's a show, I Googled EMT shortage, and these were like the first four things that popped up on my screen. U.S. faces shortage of EMTs, 1/3 quit in 2021, the pandemic decimated healthcare, doctors, nurses, x-ray techs, and EMTs and paramedics. Paramedic shortage shakes financial tone, Danbury, that's from Connecticut. Demand pushes up salaries and benefits, guys. That's good news. States strive to reverse shortage of paramedics and EMTs. Connecticut 2022, a shortage of EMS volunteers. We don't have a shortage. We have quite a few volunteers. You're looking at a sampling of them here. This is just Andover, and that's not all of them. It's just like grabbing a bunch of them, posing in front of, let's say, a tanker and asking them to pose for a picture, but there's more. And the same is true in Hebron and Marlborough. Some more pictures of our kids doing their thing. She's an alum, Lindsay. She graduated last year, two years ago. And there's Alexa. That's actually Ted's. That's a structured fire next to Ted's Market, the liquor store, last summer. That looks like Dylan in a Hebron drill. And they're not just EMTs. Some of them do firefighting, too. That is Jess and Alexa, right, these two right here, went to the Fire Academy, Connecticut State Fire Academy for the Intro to the Fire Service. And to the left, me and Tim had already done that, and they went back for our advanced Intro to the Fire Service. And Emily, I believe you told me you've done Intro to the Fire Service, and you're doing this. And that's a residential program, by the way. They go to the fire school in Windsor Locks, and they stay there for?
Five days.
Five days. To that point. And you're up in the morning and carrying ladders over your head and all that fun stuff. Yeah. Slide, please. So that was our first, first year. We had two sections that year, and then next slide. And this was this past year at the convention. We go to the skating, that's convention at, was it Foxwoods?
Yeah.
Yeah, at Foxwoods. And they go, and they go to workshops. They do four breakout sessions where they, you know, are lectured by paramedics and doctors on the latest and greatest medical things. And this year, we took this year's class, and people from last year wanted to go back. They wanted to give up a day and go back and sit through more medical lectures. And so we took them to them. Excellent. All right, so as far as volunteers, and this is just the licensed EMS slide. These are just our kids who are certified for providing EMS care. Alexa. We got Jess, Leah, Tim, Matt, Emily's here, Chris couldn't make it, Aaron is here, and Katie couldn't make it today. And then, and this is just from memory. I might have missed a couple, but the kids who are, they aren't kids anymore, they're adults. They're alum, who are still serving. Colin Babic, Dylan Custer, Jillian, Riley, Lindsay, and Pierce are Ram students who are also serving in their communities, and some of them are working professionally in EMS as well. And I think that's pretty cool, because when other towns are screaming and saying, "We don't have an EMT to respond to a call," look at what we're doing here. And the credit goes to them, because Jess getting through the course is tough enough, and then they have to go to the firehouse every week. It's drill every Wednesday or every Monday, depending on your department. They have to give up time to go on calls. You know, we talked about the extracurriculars. These are people who are, you know, getting up from dinner and responding to an auto accident, or going to a chest pain call, or allergic reaction, or little old lady who's sick. But they're getting up and leaving the fun things that we think of kids normally doing in their afternoons, evenings, and mornings, and weekends, and they're getting out, and they're hopping in the ambulance or fire truck. And that brings me to Leah as an example. So recently, there was a situation in Andover. Most of the EMTs were already assigned to a call. Andover's rescues and ambulances had already gone out on a call. And Leah was not quick enough to make it to the firehouse, apparently missed all the trucks. Well, we won't get into it, but anyway, we didn't get to go. So a second call, actually a third call that night, third call came in, and it was a life-threatening emergency, and Leah, a junior here around, was the only EMT in town. She was it. So she got in the rescue truck with her dad. And they took the rescue to this emergency call. And an important point, most of us spend our time in the ambulances, and we know where everything is in the ambulances, and, you know, what's in it, where it is, and what box it lives in, and what compartment it lives in. We don't take the rescue truck on the medicals all that often. Leah thought about it on the way to the call. She thought about the type. This is something we talked about in class, right? Listen to your dispatch, think about what you might be going to. She thought about what she might need. She thought about where she thought it was on the truck. When she got there, there was a lot of upset bystanders. She didn't want to upset them more by having them see her looking to see what was in where. So she pulled the boxes out of the truck, went around the backside of the truck, opened the box, checked first before she went in, so she wouldn't panic. That takes some thinking ahead. That takes some common sense, I suppose. She then went in. She found the patient in distress. She evaluated the patient correctly. She, she gave the correct medication. She and her father worked together to ventilate the patient, and they had to wait. One of our rescue trucks freed up and made it, and then I believe a mutual aid ambulance from Columbia took. But you were on your own with that patient. I looked at the dispatcher, because I think you had like five or six minutes. You were on your own treating that patient. This was a life-threatening emergency. This patient probably would not have survived if Leah hadn't been there. Leah wouldn't have been there if this board hadn't approved this course. That patient probably would have died. So I'd like to first recognize Leah. So I'd like to first recognize Leah. And when I talked to her about it at the firehouse a couple of days later, she was talking about it like she does now, a little uncomfortable with the attention. And I said, so, you know, how'd you feel when we called you down to the office? And she said, but this is the job, this is what we do. Right, I don't get it, this, this is what we do. And, and I love that attitude because honestly, if it hadn't been Leah that night, if it had been any one of these other people or some of these other people on the screen, I think they all would have done the same thing. I'm confident they all would have performed. So once again, not just Leah, but I would like all of you guys to stand up and you're also representing the people who can't be here tonight and are alumni. And I would like to recognize all of them for volunteering.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, you had, we have your group here, can we ask some questions, maybe see if some of these folks can field a few?
Sure.
Sure, so I'll open it up to the board. Anybody?
I, what do you guys plan on doing for your long-term career?
So I want to commission in the Air Force, so I'm going to UConn right now and also the Air National Guard.
I want to do flight nursing because I like the rush of being an EMT and I think that further my education will help me become a better nurse.
I want to go to a nursing program or a radiology program.
I, I want to go out and be a firefighter and, and EMT as a career.
I plan to go find a job as a firefighter, EMT after college and then go get my paramedic.
I plan on going to nursing school and I am hopefully going to pass my Fire One exam this weekend.
I want to be a fashion designer, but, but I plan on staying an EMT in whatever town I decide to look in.
It's awesome, fantastic. Anybody else? Any other questions? Yeah, please.
So I'm just curious, what, what is it that motivated and, you know, whoever wants to answer this, but, you know, you've chosen this class, it's clearly a lot of work, it's clearly not going to be for everybody, what is it that motivated you to, to choose taking this class and become certified as an EMT and what was your motivation behind traveling down this road?
Really just want to give back to the community any way possible. I mean, I'm interested in medicine and such, so this is kind of going with that, kind of emergency medicine works in hand with that, just being able to help people when they're having like one of the worst days of their life.
I kind of agree with Matthew, I also joined the, my fire department before I took the EMT course because I realized we had a shortage of EMTs and I wanted to help out. And now I respond to calls whenever I get the chance to and it's honestly been a very good educational experience for me to learn how to take care of patients before I start working.
I've had no family in any fire department or medical career at all, so it was like a really random decision. And one day I was bored and joined my fire department and I'm really glad I did because I've gone on so many like opportunities, I've had like the Fire Academy and I did this class and it's just great for college and it's honestly been an amazing experience. I've met so many people, so I'm glad I did.
You started the tradition in your family, don't be surprised, don't be surprised if generations down the line are, do it just because you did.
Fire Academy, because I have no connection to it whatsoever, it's the most random decision ever made, like it's, it's really funny, but.
I, I've had family in the fire service for like almost forty years or more. And I've just been hanging around the firehouse since I was, since I could walk. It was kind of just like put at me and wanted to do it, so I like doing it.
Surprisingly, we're twins, so I have the same exact story as he does. Except I was very scared of becoming an EMT or firefighter, everyone, when I was little, I would run away from fire trucks, I would go cry in the corner. He could attest to that. And, but I've always wanted to be an EMT, I've always wanted to force myself out of my comfort zone and this class was the start of it. And now I've gone to the Fire Academy, it's going to be four times this summer. So, yeah, I just really enjoy it now.
I actually had no interest in anything medical to begin with, I just wanted to learn how to help people. And then I fell in love with medical field. And I also had no interest in firefighting and so I joined the fire department. And now I'm somehow in Fire One and I love it, so.
That's great.
I originally wanted to go into nursing, so I thought it would be like a good way to introduce myself into the field and I also wanted to help people. And it was a good way to do that.
Awesome. Are any board members online that had any comments or questions? Whoever that is. Penny. Oh, Penny, go ahead, Penny.
Yeah, I know I'm not a board member, so I'm sorry, but.
That's all right.
I just want to interject and just say that I'm sorry not there, but I'm also very proud of all of you and I'm just amazed at what you do and the fact, I just wanted to let the board know as well that when we do have nine-one-one calls in the school, that our EMT students will also show up and help on the scene. And they have been very instrumental in helping people in distress and being able to give us insights and to handle it calmly, professionally and with care. So I thank you all for that and I think Paul, Paul has been very instrumental in this program. And I just wanted to be able to share that with everybody just because I think it's very important, so bravo to all of you.
Awesome. Well, I always try to wait until last, but I have a couple of things. So first, young man on the end, you already joined with the Air Guard and you're already set up and signed up and all that kind of thing?
I go to Beps, hopefully soon, I don't know.
Okay, so you're all connected and good to go, you know you go to UConn for free, right? Okay, awesome. If anybody else has an interest in what he's doing, either talk to him or I'm happy to talk to you and your parents if you have any questions. I get nothing for that, I'm just available for information if you would like. I guess the second thing that I would just say is, thank you, I appreciate everything you do to mentor and lead this program. Obviously, wouldn't go anywhere without somebody at the helm, really appreciate that. And I think the last thing I would say is that by, by, by nature of this, the title itself, emergency medical technician, you guys respond in circumstances that are not standard, sometimes not safe, sometimes, you know, again, an emergency. And the fact that you volunteer to go do that is, it's, it's noble, right? And that's what makes, I say this often, probably mostly on my Facebook, which I know none of you know anything about because you don't do Facebook anymore, it's just Instagram. But people like yourselves who are that selfless, you're the best of us and I appreciate you doing everything you do. Thank you.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry, Eric, go ahead.
Doing what you do, is it ever traumatizing for you or psychologically difficult?
I think it's definitely, being so young, it can take a toll on you, but the support group in the fire department is huge and it's like a big family. And no matter like what you saw or what you went through, there's people there that talk to you and really help you through it. So by having each other, that really helps a lot and like everybody here, we all have each other, we all talk to each other. So the support group really helps to me.
Thank you.
Good.
Yeah, so I just want to thank Mr. Bancroft for coming this evening and certainly thank our students who gave up some studying time this evening to, to come and do this presentation. When I had first seen the information about your, your actions that you had taken, that just, that I said, I reached out to Paul, I think within like fifteen minutes of seeing that email and I said, hey, we're doing these things now at board meetings and talking about, you know, highlighting some of the programs and I, I certainly had known about the program and but I think when you, when you hear a piece of information like that, it just, it really sinks home. And, and, you know, echoing what Paul said, it's because of the fact that, you know, the board several years ago supported the, you know, creation of this program and the board has continued to support this program and, and I appreciate all the work that Paul does because I do know that these kind of niche programs, a lot of it comes down to, you know, having a teacher who does a great job with kids and draws the interest of students. And so I appreciate everything that Paul, Paul's done and, and I, I, I'll, you know, Paul's getting close to the point of, it's no secret, he's getting close to the, to the point of retiring and I'm thrilled to say that we actually have already hired somebody to take over for the position in January of 2024 as Paul gets ready to enjoy the next phase of his life. So I'm super excited because there was some concern that we had collectively, Paul, myself, Dr. Price, y'all, and I know board members about whether or not we'd be able to continue this program because Paul is, is a bit of a unicorn with regards to his experience and background as in, as a, as a EMS teacher as well as being a certified as in medical professions and, and, or health profession. So I'm super excited about what the, you know, what Paul has done, but also what the, the future holds for this program as well. So thanks so much for being here.
Great, that was a great piece, thank you guys very much.
You guys go study.
Yes. All right, back to work.
Thanks, guys.
Yes, thank you guys very much. All right, that brings us to item eleven, which is old business and an update on the well project.
So this is just a super quick update, so we actually had, the board may recall that they dug a couple of wells, the last one being a seven hundred and fifty foot well where I think it was one gallon per minute yield, one, it was.
The first one was one gallon per minute yield, the second one was about six.
Was about six, so not certainly what we needed to get to. So the decision ultimately made by the facility subcommittee was to do fracking of the seven hundred and fifty foot well in an attempt to, with the hopes of getting a higher yield. The fracking took place last Tuesday and we don't know what the increased yield will be, but the company that did the fracking for us has reported they feel that they have had success in get, striking new veins and we're, we're optimistic that we're going to show an increased yield. The, the process, the reason that we don't have a number yet for what the increased yield is going to end up being is because the fact that they, after they do the fracking, they wait a period of time and then they come back and they'll test what the yield is. And I think they usually wait about a week and I think they're supposed to come, are they on?
Sometime this week.
Sometime this week, so, but they want to wait at least a week until after they do the fracking and they'll come back and I'll certainly continue to keep the board appraised of that. But it's, it's positive news, we're just hoping it's going to be positive enough that we get the total yield that we need.
Okay, well, that's some good news.
Yes.
On the well front, finally.
Yes.
Okay, any questions, concerns? All right, so which moves us on to item twelve, which is new business and the presentation of the food service program, Whitson's.
And I'll turn it over to Ms. K.
So we have with us John Prunier, who's the district manager for Whitson's, I can't say your name today, and Kate, who is our food service director here in the building, they have a short presentation for us.
Thank you for having us tonight, we just wanted to give an update, just a couple items on what's going on this year and what we can expect next year.
So before we start, I'd just like to thank the, thank the board members, certainly, we were here last year. This is our third, we've just completed our third year of five. None of the three years have been normal from any type of perspective as far as our business, your business is concerned. So I think consider that we're all, you know, we're all survivors of the last few years of turmoil. But this year, a little bit more resembles what a normal year is. When we turn the page to next year, that we get to that normal scene. A lot of what we talk about tonight is, is really getting us back there.
All right, so with Whitson's, I promised you, it's people to treat, you can go ahead. Treat everyone like family, to serve wholesome food that tastes great and to nurture others and communication. It's just something that we live in every day. Our simply rooted philosophy represents Whitson's commitment to helping people live healthier lives. We're dedicated to providing wholesome, high-quality nutrition, tell our students, fresh and locally sourced where possible. And our menu items feature wholesome ingredients prepared from scratch as often as possible. We use seasonality, usually preferred foods and we have a great variety as well. So as far as people, my staff is concerned, Ms. Barbara, she was promoted to assistant manager this year, she's doing an excellent job with that. I retain a hundred percent of the staff, so everybody has been on for at least two years and everybody has completed all their mandatory state-required and company-required training.
All right, so I'll just talk a little brief about some statistics. So year-to-date, and I believe that we pushed those up to May, through May, we've served twenty-two thousand three hundred and forty-five breakfast meals at the high school, ninety-two hundred and fifty at the middle, lunch meal, seventy-one thousand one hundred and thirty at the high school, nine-six-seventy-seven at the middle school and then the representative participation for each one of those meal periods is, is below that.
Which is really incredible, the, the percentage, I mean, if you look at the middle school lunch per, their participation, sixty-two percent, that's huge. That's a great number of people we're serving in the high school as well. About every fifteen, twenty minutes, we see about a hundred and twenty students, it's very busy and we love seeing them do what. I could tell all of those students there what they eat every day, I know them.
So just in relative to financials and meals, you have your total breakfast meals combined through May is thirty-two thousand thirty-four, your lunch meal's ninety-three eight fifty-one. And to date, the program has profitability of a hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We'll talk a little bit about that in a second. Year-end projections, we're looking at thirty-three thousand one seventy-one for breakfast, a hundred and twelve, one twenty-three for lunch and a profitability of about a hundred and twenty-one thousands on projection. So June tends to be a little bit of a, an outlier because of some extra costs and lower operating fees. And then projected next year, and I'll talk a little bit more detail here. So as everyone probably already knows, the, the program has been on free universal for a couple of years. For a brief period this year, it did revert back eligibility because of smart funding lapse. And the state decided to turn that over and refund it from March first out to the end of the year, so I think it was about.
We were about a hundred less in each school daily, so it was.
So we, we definitely see a drop off. So with, with the knowledge that we have on that short period of time that we had going back, we're basing our projections for next year in that, in that, in that zone. A lot of the thinking was is to go back to the pre-COVID prior to March two thousand twenty. We sort of didn't want to think that. There's been more interest in lunch and breakfast programs because the more students are participating because of the, of the universal free. So it will definitely become an elastic and go back, but we don't think it's going to go back to, all the way back to pre-COVID. So there's, there's going to be more, more kids participating, students that weren't here three, four years ago that are here that have now participated in the program for three consecutive years are now benefiting and should continue to benefit by the programs that, that we have in the case, that Kate produces on a daily basis. So with all that said, we do shrink the program back on revenue, we shrink the program back on profit. But with the fact that the program has been healthy for the last few years, last year we came to you and we talked about a price increase, meal price increase, which was, was, was accepted and was put in, but it wasn't really used that much this year, it was only a short period of time. So next year, we get to see that increase in the meal price become effective from day one and we actually see how that goes from, you know, from where we are now to where it goes. But we projected a very conservative, break-even scenario for next year and we hope to do better with that. But I wanted the board to understand the logic behind the numbers. So a couple of contributing factors that we're going to talk about, some are similar to last year. We talked about the, the anticipated drop of participation due to the universal free, free program with terminating. Three percent wage across the board for all of Kate and her team members, new minimum wage, again, I think it's at the fourth, fourth consecutive year on a, on a dollar, so we've gone in four years from eleven to fifteen. The cost of goods is forecasted to be a little bit better on inflation next year. Last year we were in the eight to ten percent, we're down into that six percent. Paper and cleaning seems to still be a little bit problematic. And then the CPI increase, which is a inflationary index that is used in our contract for management and admin fees, was the highest that I've ever seen in all the years that I've been in schools with these contracts at eight point two because it's just what it is and we negotiated with, with Eva to a six point two. So again, we're partners with the district. And to my, to the point previous is, there's no meal price increase this year because we took it last year and we'll realize a full year of the, the meal price increase that we took last year.
So the next couple of slides are just some highlights. So for this current year, we transitioned some of the locations. we transitioned some of the locations. Our, one of our breakfast locations moved from the concession stands down to the middle school store. We featured all the pop-up stations that Whitson's has created, which is fantastic, including Wing Shack, Soul Taco, which is a good taco. The kids love it. Nashville Hot Chicken Chicken and Cheeky Joe's, which is a smoothie bar that I run as a pop-up. I just kind of sneak it in there, and then the kids go wild. They, they love it, and they're surprised with it. We've had a lot of celebrations, including a Ram Harvest Festival that kind of ran consecutively with the Hebron Harvest Festival. We had a Luau Day. We do monthly student appreciation, mostly with homemade desserts and things. And so we, we try to give them something to look forward to and to be surprised with as well. And again, our two most popular stations are the Great American Beaking Company, which is the deli all for us at Inene's, and we're doing about close to 300 a day there, and Coyote Grill, which is similar, like the Belgian. Next, yeah. A couple more highlights. Management, both Faith and I were present at the open houses for the school staff, communication with the parents this year, answer questions. We had a great weekend of catering with the Connecticut Music Educators Association, which was really nice to see other districts. They had a lot of people come up and like, "Hey, we're Whitson's," so they laughed at. And our company also started an Enhancing Life program. Here, I highlighted that around the holidays, we offered treats for our delivery drivers. But as far as the company goes, Ram had the most amount of coats donated to, one warm coat, one warm coat, and we donated all those coats to a, the Superintention and Willamette Tips. They all went to Inneville, which was fantastic. I believe it was around 145 coats. It was great. And again, we do have our technology. You have our front-of-the-house digital screens. We broadcast the menus for the students, as well as the officials, for saying, "An allergen." It can also feature specials with insulin forward to for them. And in back of the house, we do have digital signage as well for training and marketing, just things for my staff. For next year, again, we talked about, it's returning to paid meals. It's going to be interesting, but I hope we pique the interest of our students and that they'll continue to participate because we love having them. As I'm sure Colin and let you know, we have been awarded an equipment grant for salad bars for the amount of $25,000. They will be installed over the summer, and we'll be able to use farm-to-school produce at those salad bars. So I really look forward to that. We'll be expanding our farm-to-school program. As I said, our goal with Whitson's is to have 20% of all produce to be local. It's a challenge in New England. In the winter, we'll do our best. This summer, there's going to be all new walk-ins installed, freezers, walk-ins. So literally a couple hours after school is finished, they will be in there to start construction. So great things to come. And we also will be doing a refresh on the deli station. It's so popular, we want to get, students and staff will hit through quickly. So we have two new turbo machines, and we're going to just kind of re-figure how this station is turning. So it'll be more seamless for everybody. Okay. And communications, last case. So I have monthly communications and newsletters that go out to this client, Eva, and Colin as well. Again, we have our marketing for the students, communications weekly that I publish in the Raptor Report and the Rambler. And then IT has been kind enough to help with automatic notifications that go out through the My School Bucks app, negative balance, and all of that. And I'm also part of the Local Hunger Action Team, or HAC committee, and we talk about the needs of our community and how we can all work together and help each other. And I relay whatever information we have back to the district. I think I were very glad to be here. Love, love Ram. I love the students, faculty. We have a great time. Any questions for us?
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the, I'm sorry, go ahead there.
It's nice to see you again. I remember last year, and it seems to me that you're, you're really on top of it. And, and, you know, I'm looking forward to this, this, this thing continuing.
Any comments or questions from the board members online?
I, I only had one question. Is the, other than the smacking and noise-making sounds of people enjoying food, is there, what's the feedback mechanism for the students for things they like, things they don't like, stuff like that?
Sure. We actually do, we do a semi-annual survey that goes out in our newsletters, and there's QR codes all around the cafeteria as well. Haven't received any feedback actually from the, one this spring yet. But, you know, certainly, I, I have had an opportunity to go and speak in a few of the classes. And so I take any suggestions that they have to heart, and we'll bring it back. You know, we, we do our best to get them through quickly. They, whatever they love, I'm trying to menu with a good variety so that they don't get bored of eating one thing. We had some ramen bowls at Vegetables, which is great plant-based, plant-forward concept. And, you know, so we just tried different things. I had kale chips for all of May. That was our superfood for May. And I was going through, like, giant kale daily. I was shocked, shocked. It was great. So I think they love it.
The benefits of having Kate, Kate's a chef, so a lot of what we do requires that talent and that skill set. So she really, really conveys that and is able to connect with the students and able to actually deliver those things. So it's, you know, it's a really unique situation and a nice, it's a small environment here, which, you know, very, very unique. So she can do a lot here.
I think we can cut you a break on the wintertime, fresh fruits and vegetables being sourced from New England.
Yeah.
Personally prefer that they're not from New England during that time frame.
Different definitions of local now. What does that mean? And obviously, we've got some relationships in the, in the local area. Kate, she can actually go and pick up things early and things as they're harvested. And most of the stuff is all harvested, all kind of get back to school, or getting close to be finished anyway.
Right.
You know, we do our best.
Yeah.
I think I wanted to, Kate wanted me to talk really quick about sustainable. So we do have a, a fresh fish program that we're going to introduce next year. We do it in some of the streets on a higher volume, but we're going to try to do it in the smaller volume schools or the lower volume schools, where we actually have a relationship with Red's Best. It's a company on Gloucester. And the, the fish is actually tagged, we, you know, we put an order in and they tag it right off, like, to us within 24 hours. So she can have that fresh, fresh fish product on, on the plate for the kids.
Wow.
So we're going to, we're going to, we're going to try. It's, it's a challenge because of the, obviously, complexities of the fishing, but that moves really quick from there to here, and it's just a matter of volume at this point in time. So it's, it's a nice program.
All right. Well, should time that with some opportunity for the board to try out the-
Or we can figure it out.
Mike, I do have one question.
Yes.
You say here that during the summer months, new walk-in refrigerators and freezers will be installed. Who, who owns those?
So we do. That's a leftover from last year's capital because of supply chain issues.
Okay.
No, you're fine.
It's just very exciting.
And that's coinciding with the-
No, yeah.
So the floor got done, but inside, the coolers couldn't get done. All of that had to be pulled. Yep.
Okay. So did you have anything else, Eva, that you thought you might want to add to it?
No, not to this portion of, there's a second portion. 12-2 is, is the next one.
Okay.
But if everyone's okay and doesn't have any questions, comments, or concerns, thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Kate.
I actually am excited to hear about the fish because Channel 3 ran a story that New Britain was serving salmon. And I texted Kate at home, and I said, "How is that happening? And why don't we have that?"
Are you a fish guy, Eva? Are you a fish guy?
I could head out there for-
Yeah.
Okay, so in 12.2 in your packet, this is an annual item that we need to do. So as they stated, Whitson's has completed their third year out of five years. So originally, when we go out to bid, because it's a federal mandate, we have to go out every five years to bid. And then we renew the contract annually. So we're at this point in time, we have to enter into a contract with Whitson's again. And so that's where the board has to now consider whether allowing the superintendent to go into contract for the, the next school year. And we're kind of late to go out to bid, so I'm hoping that the board considers, yes, that you would like to have Colin enter into contract.
And we just, we just went out to bid, right? That's what you-
So, no. So in theory, so we still have two more years left on our contract. So this is just a pro forma that we have to, just every annually, just put a rubber stamp on it that we're still good with them.
Yeah. When I said to them, "I'm, I'm looking forward to continuing here," that was sort of within our file here, I was referring to.
Okay. So I guess the question, I mean, before we, you know, consider a motion, is there anything else that you, you guys feel like we need to hear?
No, I think they're doing a great job. Kate herself came from Chartwells, and I joked that John had defected from Chartwells also, and Chartwells was the company that we had before Whitson's came on board. They, they just, they're a family-oriented company. They are a family business. They're growing, but they seem to, Kate and her has a great crew that seems to be doing well. I don't know if Ava wants to speak to anything that she may or may not experience.
I was just thinking, I love their tater tots. Remember Smiley Fries? They're really good. They're always crispy.
General feedback from the student population is that lunch is fine?
Yeah. I mean, like, there are some days, and it's like, could be better, but I think for the most part, for a school lunch, they're really good.
Were those kale chip days?
I personally have not tried the kale chips.
Kale chip, yeah.
I, I guess I'm missing out, honestly, but I'll have to try them at some point.
Okay. All right. Well, that being the case, if there's no, no other comments or concerns or questions, then what I would do is entertain a motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into a one-year contract extension with Whitson's. Eric, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Heather. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a voice vote, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, that passes unanimously.
Thank you very much for that.
Okay. Which brings us to item 12.3, which is the discussion and possible action on the contract for the detention pond project.
We're going to keep on rolling with Eva.
Okay. So as we learned through this process, Mr. Schleyhoffer, Colin, and I, there's a difference between detention pond and retention. So I actually looked at the definitions so I can educate everybody. A detention basin pond temporarily stores stormwater runoff. The basin is designed to manage stormwater runoff by storing it and releasing it gradually upon, until completely drained, unlike a retention basin or pond is designed to permanently hold water. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to do with this project is to clear the area of weeds and debris that, and soot that has, or silt that has, over the years, clogged away, I guess, and tipped the concrete structure that all the water's supposed to flow through slightly. So the companies that we went out to bid, and we had one, two, three, four companies, provide us with their quotes on how they would address the project. Only one company, the company that came in at the 56,500, which is Donahue General Contractors, actually came out to the walkthrough. It was not a mandatory walkthrough. So they came out and they understood the project because, again, there were nuances to the project. So until you stand there and look at it and understand what is happening, I think that's why the other dollar amounts came in much higher, because I think people thought it was going to be a much better fix than is necessary. So LaRero is someone the district has contracted with to assist us in this process. And LaRero is actually the one who provided us with an estimated budgetary dollar amount of $40,000. So the Donahue General Contractors came in at $56,000. LaRero actually took the time, based on our contract with them, to review all the submissions, and they are actually recommending Donahue as the company that we should go enter into contract with to complete this job for us.
Okay.
The, just the recommendation there's in enclosure 12.3 in your board packet actually is the report from LaRero Engineering where they're saying that their recommendation is Donahue General Contract.
Did I, did I hear the, we had originally put, and now if we go with the 56, we'll do a little transfer.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's-
Okay. Is there anything else we need to know?
The transfer that Eric was just alluding to is on, is on the agenda for this evening.
Of course it's. Okay, got it. Superintendent, anything? What did that, okay. So look, let's get this on the, let's, let's get a motion out on the board, and then we can talk about it if necessary. So at this point, I would authorize, entertain a motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract with Donahue General Contractors to complete the detention pond project. Eric, make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Is there any discussion? I, I don't want to beat this up too quick, but I just had one, one basic question. The, is, are they all on the same timeline to get this done? The all that fits with the same time? Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions. Board, anybody else? All right. Hearing no further questions, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that'll pass unanimously, which will bring us to 12.4, which is the tuba donation.
So this is, this is really just an opportunity that I wanted to publicly thank a resident of Colbrook Village, Paul Steinmeier. He is indicated a desire to donate his late, late wife's tuba. It's, it's actually highlighted, his letter is in, in the board packet, item 12-point, enclosure 12.4. His wife was a, a student at the University of Hartford, Hart School of Music, and he has a tuba that he'd like to donate to the music program here at Ram. He is saying that his wife paid $1,000 for it in the 1960s, and he's asking for just a letter in return saying that we're accepting a tuba in, in the amount of at least $1,000. I, I will tell you, I, you learn a lot on the internet, and I learned that tubas going back as far as the 1950s, some have value in the neighborhood of $8,000, $9,000. So I will not have a problem accepting this donation on behalf of the district and giving Mr. Steinmeier a letter saying that we appreciate his donation. And I just wanted to, you know, do this in a public meeting and make sure that we showed our appreciation and thanks for Mr. Steinmeier. It's a very generous donation, and, and my understanding is the tuba is in very, very good condition, and the students will benefit from it, having it here in district.
That's correct. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Steinmeier. Appreciate your donation. All right. That brings us to item 12.5, which is the discussion of the Board of Education self-evaluation. So I'll take the reins on this.
Sure.
So the board is required, what I was initially under the impression of, annually to do a self-evaluation, but on closer scrutiny of the policy, it is actually every other year on the even years, if I believe.
Correct.
That is what the policy states. But it doesn't say you can't do one. It just says it's required to do it every other year. So I didn't want arbitrarily make a decision that says, "We don't need to do this this year," without giving the board the opportunity to decide if one, they wanted to do it themselves. And so for our newer board members, just to give you some context of what I'm talking about, this is really purely a self-reflection, self-awareness exercise for the board. There's a kind of a scripted survey of questions that gives the board an opportunity, each board member an opportunity to fill out what they think we do well as a board, what we don't do well as a board, things we can, we should focus on. I can't remember the, the nature of all the questions. It's, it's provided to the, generally to the secretary, who then compiles the kind of the feedback, and then later in the year- And then later in the year, we sort of share the information. And I want to say, if I remember correctly, again, in an anonymous format, just an opportunity for us to, like I said, self-reflection. It's not required this year. Full disclosure, I did a terrible job of managing this last year. I honestly didn't even really know that it was a policy, which I've already, you know, beat myself about head and shoulders for. But we did get it done, but frankly, if I'm being honest, I'm not sure it was done in the most effective way it could be done. So I would certainly be entertained and be understanding if we wanted to do it this year. If you don't want to do it this year, that's fine, too. I'll just kind of leave it up to you guys to, you know, put it out there. And if you do, then if the majority of the folks want to do it, then we'll do it. And if you don't, then we won't.
So, and if you don't mind, so the policy specifically states that it is done annually on even number of years, as Chair Morris just said. And if it is going to be done on odd numbered years, it requires the majority of the board to vote that it wants to be done. That's actually stated within the policy.
And just so you get the rhythm, we would hand out that, that survey this month. It gets collected, I believe, over July and August. And then I believe they, it's shared in either September or October.
Sounds right.
Something like that. That's the rhythm of the share. So any thoughts, input, questions?
I guess my thought is to comply with the policy, which would be to do it every other year.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody have a burning desire to do this? Anybody online? Any of the board members online have a strong passion, one way or the other?
I'm good with waiting till next year.
Okay. All right. Well, look, it doesn't sound like there's any, you know, strong desire to do it this year. And like I said, I just didn't want to arbitrarily make that decision without just giving everybody the opportunity to talk about it. So unless, you know, there's six board members that say, nope, I want to do it, I'm going to go ahead and just assume that we're going to move on to next year and we'll pick it up next year. All right. Great. Thank you for giving me the time to talk about that. Appreciate it. Which brings us to item 12.6, which is the discussion of the human resource position.
So as the board knows, the, the position of the administrative assistance to the superintendent is also historically been responsible for managing the human resource generalist functions throughout the district with both schools and all employees. So supporting employees in a variety of ways, you're doing things, everything from posting vacancies, onboarding new employees, you know, managing and helping teachers and staff members manage leaves of absence, navigating things like teachers' retirement board. There's just, there are a lot of human resource generalist responsibilities associated with supporting, you know, a certified and non-certified staff of about 250 to 275 employees. That position is also supporting the work that the superintendent has to do. And that's also a fairly big job as well. There's things like putting together agendas for board meetings. There's things like doing policy revision. There's things like doing meeting minutes. There's, you know, managing like managing the superintendent's calendar, et cetera. There's, that unto itself is often in many districts, a job unto itself, just being an assistant, an administrative assistant for the superintendent of schools. And so I will tell you that very early on in my tenure here at Ram, I recognized the challenge of, of the position, the way that it, that it was when I came in and that it currently is. And I, very early on, had conversations with my then administrative assistant who was doing this work because I recognized the challenges that she had in juggling the demands of the HR work, coupled with the admin assistance, the clerical work, you know, in assisting my office. And I had thought about the idea of putting an HR position into this budget that has just been approved, but ultimately decided not to because I know that it was the board's desire to keep the budget for next year as low as we possibly could keep it. Ultimately, the board may recall that the person that was in that position resigned to take a different position and, and actually highlighted one of the reasons that the decision was made to leave the position was because of the challenges associated with balancing the demands of the job. And, and, you know, we've recently transitioned to somebody new in that particular position. They are doing a great job in learning the ropes and, and there are a lot of ropes to learn. And what we, what I continue to find is the challenges of balancing the needs of, of the office of the superintendent, coupled with the HR functions. And, and as I've explained to a few board members, I often, because of the fact that the HR work has to take priority. For example, we just had to get all of the, I don't know what they're officially called, but essentially the contracts. Thank you very much. They're called different things in different places, but the conditions of employment letters. And, and we had to get those out to all district staff, right? And we had to do that at a time when we were preparing for this board meeting. And I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. I found myself doing a lot of clerical administrative assistant work. Not that there's anything wrong with that, and I certainly don't have a problem with doing it. I just don't feel that's the best way for me to spend my time. And I don't believe that it's what the board has hired me to do. But I, you know, the policies that we're going to review, the redlined versions of these policies, I ended up spending a significant portion of time over the past couple of weeks preparing those redlined versions of the policies for the board's review. And again, I just, it's, it's a balancing act. And, and my, we have an opportunity to create a position, right? That does not currently exist. That would provide more of an HR generalist support mechanism for teachers and staff. I would see this position not necessarily being a full-time position. I would want to keep it, if I could, to 30 hours per week or less than 30 hours per week, maybe around 27, 28, 29 hours per week. We, it would be cost neutral to the budget. It wouldn't impact the budget. And the reason it's not impacting the budget is because of the fact that, as the board knows, I have every position that we've, that we've lost or has become vacated through attrition. We've been looking at whether or not those positions need to be refilled. And with the position, when a, a teaching position was vacated as a result of the instructional coach, curriculum coordinator position being created, we were able to determine that we don't, we did not need to backfill that teaching position because we had adequate staffing to take on the courses that that teacher was, was doing. So we did it with the French teaching position that board members may recall from earlier in this year. And this is another opportunity for us to save some additional funding. So we are not going to replace that position. Even if the board ultimately is not supportive of the HR generalist position, we still wouldn't backfill that, that English teaching position. And, and so, you know, I've had some conversations with Chair Morris about the idea of this. And we talked, and Eric as the, as the committee chair for the subcommittee of the finance subcommittee. And what we discussed was bringing it to the public meeting and having a conversation about it. And I did have a chance to speak to some of the board members individually about, you know, what my thoughts and feelings were about this position. And, you know, it's, it's not a position, just to make sure that everybody's clear. It's not anything that I feel the board needs to vote on. It's not something that we would vote to approve or not approve. But I wanted to get a general feeling of what the board's consensus was about whether or not that this would be a position that the board members would support. I think it would be incredibly advantageous to teachers and staff because there are times where, I will tell you, and, and I won't put Ethan on the spot, but I knew that there were a lot of, I was hearing a lot over the past week and a half, two weeks of, when are we going to get our terms and conditions of employment letter? When are we going to get those? When are we going to get those? And the reason that we hadn't been able to get them out in a manner as quickly as we could is because we're putting together this 75-page board packet for everybody. And so it's a juggling act, right? And, and certain things have to take priorities. And it's, when it, when it comes down to providing the support to teachers and staff in the district who support our students, I really hate to not be able to meet their immediate needs when they're, when they, when they come up. And so I think it's going to be incredibly advantageous to the, to the teachers and staff to have somebody who, who's really kind of focused more on HR work. And then selfishly, it's going to benefit my office because of the fact that I think it's going to end up enabling me to be, not have to do clerical work that I think can be done by somebody else so that I could be out doing more district leadership initiatives as well. So I can certainly take any questions that board members may have. But again, this is just an opportunity for me to, to get the input of, of board members.
I have a couple of comments, but I'll go ahead and reserve the time for board members to ask questions or, or speak up as they see fit. Eric?
Yeah, it's, well, thank you for this.
Sure.
Whenever we're adding to administration, I think it's always a time we have to think very carefully. These, I'm not, I'm not arguing against it. I'm just saying that part, when a teacher leaves, that's part of our overall plan to, to size the school to the number of students that we have. And to, to backfill to some extent with an administrative position kind of is flowing a little bit in the other direction. So I just think that it's, this type of decision would not, to my mind, be an automatic. I guess I would like to hear from the other board members how they feel about it so that everyone's comfortable with this, should we, should we decide to move forward.
Go ahead, Sue.
I, I think this is a much needed position. I think I've heard in the past that this is something that we're lacking and we don't have within the school. So I fully support it. I appreciate Colin, you looking out, not adding it to the budget and, you know, having this budget neutral or still even a cost savings to us. But I appreciate the thoughtfulness around it. And I, I think it's a needed position. And thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I would agree with Sue. I think, you know, I see this as running your business. And what do you need to have to run your business most effectively? And if you're saying that you're spending time doing, you know, administrative tasks which have value, but that's not really what we hired you to do, then I think we need to find somebody who can pick up those tasks. And I think doing it in a way where no one is impacted, that's, that's smart. So I'm, I'm in support of it.
Good. Any more?
I have two concerns. One is that, and this is where Eric was going, I do worry about the community perception that we're giving, losing a teacher position and gaining an administrative position. That if it's sold that way, it doesn't reflect. My other concern is if it's a part-time position, is that going to decrease the caliber of candidates? The type of person who would fill that role, given that it's part-time?
That's a fair question.
Would our best candidate for the position really be seeking a full-time position?
It's certainly possible. You know, and I want to be, make sure that I'm clear on this as well. So I appreciate everybody, the questions. So I guess I don't really see this as a administrative position. I guess that's one thing that I would put out there. There are several school districts that have additional secretary slash clerical staff, but solely focused on HR, right? So just, this is not a person who's going to be doing investigation, misconduct investigations, right? This is not, this is not an individual who's going to be doing things like contract negotiations with bargaining units. The work is currently being done by an administrative assistant, but this particular administrative assistant has a myriad of other responsibilities, right? A myriad of other ones because it's just managing the, the office of the superintendent. And what I see this being is it, it, an important position, but it's an important position where somebody has hopefully some skills, knowledge and background in, in, in doing some HR type of work, right? So I'm, I'm talking about things like understanding what FMLA is and how, how the FMLA process, it plays out. The fact that you have had to work 1,250 hours in the previous 360 days in order to qualify for FMLA. Those are things that you need to know when you're, you know, when somebody comes and says, hey, I want to take FMLA, right? And so there, there's, it's the processing of saying, hey, I need this job to be posted, right? I'm sorry, this vacancy to be posted. We have a resignation or a retirement. And, and so what, when that happens, the, the building administration or myself or Eva will go and say, hey, we need to post for this custodian, for this para, for this teaching position, for this whatever. And there are times where, again, that needs to be done because we want to get it posted so that we get it up as quickly as possible. Well, that's a process. And, and sometimes because of maybe a responsibility that the person has tending to the role of being the administrative assistant for the superintendent, maybe that gets pushed back a day or two. And, and that loses us a day or two. So it's, I just want to make sure that I didn't mischaracterize it because again, I don't see this as being an administrative position. I, I was talking to a colleague of mine in another school district. And because, and, and what they have in, in their district is the superintendent's office has two full-time administrative assistants. One of them focuses more on doing things like processing purchase orders, doing things related to budgetary items. The other one focuses more on human resource aspects. And, and so it's, it's two administrative assistant positions, but they just have different responsibilities. And so there are school districts out there that, and again, I'm, I don't know if I would use the term, I'm using the term generalist because they have a general understanding of, of HR functions. But it's, it's more of processing of paperwork and clerical work associated with HR functions. It's like teaching somebody, so Eva and, and people from the accounting office have spent a significant amount of time working with my new administrative assistant, teaching her how to go about doing the new terms of conditions and getting those updated, right? And so that was a tremendous time commitment. If we have two people that know how to do it, it's beneficial to the, to the district because teachers and staff aren't waiting two or three weeks to get those done and competing with, well, I need to get the board agenda done. Because getting this, again, this document done is, is a huge endeavor. I mean, we, we're pretty much locked down for two or three days in our office getting this document, these documents put together. And so I just, I think it was important to clarify that.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you did. I'm glad you did because I wasn't thinking of it that way. Even though you had implied it, you know, you start talking about taking on tasks relative to what I would used to call personnel.
Sure.
It's now with the human resources. My mind kind of jumped to, oh, it's a human resources person. When I think what you're saying is that you had a position that was, that was, that was taking care of both the human resources side and what I would say, general administrative assistant.
Correct.
Right? And now you're finding that it's untenable. Is that fair?
Correct.
It's untenable. So, so you need an additional portion of an administrative assistant to close the gap. Is that a fair statement?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with that.
So I can just throw a couple of things out there as I kind of heard this whole discussion. I'm sorry, who's, who's that?
It's Farrington. I actually have a couple.
Pam, why don't you go ahead first?
I have a couple of questions and some thoughts. So I understand that technically it's not an administrative position, but it will be part of the administrative budget. Am I correct about that?
So it falls under the superintendent's budget in terms of it's not in the instructional area? It would fall under the clerical, your non-certified salary?
So we're, so we're considering it a clerical position technically?
Correct.
Okay. And so, and I may have missed some of this since I'm new to the board. And Colin, I appreciate you clarifying that whether, whether this position is filled or not, that we are not replacing that teacher. Can we talk a little bit about how many classes that teacher taught? And how many students that was? What's that doing to the class sizes of the other? And that might be a separate discussion, but I think I'm But I think I'm a little, uh, I'm a little tentative about, and, and I, again, I wasn't here for the whole budget process. So I'm a little tentative about the fact that this wasn't included in the budget, but now we're kind of taking money even though we're saying we're not, we wouldn't replace that teacher anyway. I, I'm just a little concerned about the perception of all of it.
Sure, sure. So what, so I'll start with, I think, what was your first question? So the, the person who was in this teaching position was teaching three sections and they were teaching three classes. So there were a .6 teaching position. And then the other .4 of their FTE was being the department coordinator. And so I, I don't have the specific information, Pam, for you about how that impacted class size specifically. I can get that and send it with, share it with the entire board, but I could tell you it was not a significant impact. One class, one section of what this teacher was, was teaching has been given to another high school RAM teacher as what we call a six assignment, right? And so the reason for that is because of the fact that the course that needed to be taught required a certain background and experience. This teacher had that background experience, had a full schedule. So we've assigned this person a six assignment. The other two classes were able to be absorbed fairly easily. I will use the term fairly easily. I will tell you, Chris Mater, the scheduler for the high school, he did some, a lot of legwork to make it happen. So he might not say it was fairly easy, but I will say that we, we, it was, it was doable and it was not a significant impact. We weren't, we're not talking about taking class sizes. And I'm being somewhat facetious when I say this, but we're not talking about going from class sizes of 11 or 12 students to where they're at 23 or 24. If, if, if some changes were made or if, or if class sizes was increased, it was, it was not by a substantial amount of, of students. I guess, you know, what we're, what we're looking at doing with, with, of analyzing these current positions, this is something that really I, I started doing very early on in my tenure here at RAM. And I'll use the library media specialist position when that became vacant. And when we identified the library media specialist, that person was a .6 music teacher. Am I saying this right? .6 music teacher and a .4 instructional technology coaching position. And what we, when we, um, when we backfilled that, that person moved from that .6 music, .4 instructional technology coach, they moved into the 1.0 FTE as a library media specialist. We looked at the staffing at that point. We said, hey, we don't need to backfill this instructional technology coach because our new library media specialist has the capability to do that work. We're constantly doing that. So that was something that I think I did in my first month and a half here in the district. And we did it with the French teaching position earlier on. When we had the vacancy, we analyzed our staffing. We said, we can make do without having to replace this French teaching position. So this is an exercise that we do all the time when we look at vacancies that become available. Because Pam, to your point, we don't want to have the decision. We wouldn't want that decision to not replace any kind of a teaching or certified or instructional FTE. We don't want that decision to, to negatively impact students. We're, we're very cautious and conscientious of making sure that that's not the case. If we looked at it and said, hey, we, we need to replace a .4 or a .3 or whatever the case may be, we would have done that. We're just able to do it without having to, to make that replacement. So again, Pam, I don't have the exact numbers for you on, on class size, but I could tell you it was not a significant impact.
So could I, if I could just ask a couple of questions? When, uh, so was, it was, when did we have the change? When did our previous administrative assistant?
April-ish, I believe.
So I want to say this right at the, um, so I think the, the couple of things that I would just, the response to a couple of really great points that were made. First of all, Kirsten, I really appreciate the, number one, the idea of the, the discussion about the perception. A hundred percent have to be sensitive to that fact. I'll talk about that in a second. But the second part is I would say that your point about making sure that if we're going to bring somebody, that we bring somebody that actually adds the value that we're looking for, I think that's super relevant. And if it's at a point where what you've proposed isn't going to fulfill that need, then I don't think there's any point to hire less than what we need. We should probably have another discussion and, and maybe decide that maybe we do need to, to your point, look for something that's more full-time or whatever. I don't, I think we'll probably cross that bridge when we get to it, but I think it's a great point to consider. The one or the couple of things I would just throw out there. This, you know, as far as the budgeting is concerned, this, I don't think the fact that we were going to have this gap in the human resources skill set was something that was apparent at the point where we were budgeting. So even though with the changeover happened in the A, May, the April-May timeframe, we hadn't had the experience of having the, the, the person that we have in that position now provide kind of the support services. And so understanding that what we, the person that we had before had a different skill set than the person that we have now. Not good or bad, just a different skill set. So I think the last thing I would just address is that when we talk about the perception of, well, we're, you know, not necessarily backfilling a teacher, but we're hiring an administrator. I think, look, if we had gotten to the point where we were in this meeting and we were not, we were specifically making decisions and not budgeting to backfill a teacher for, for, um, for financial purposes, financial reasons, then I think it would be a very appropriate point to bring up to say, well, we better be, be very careful about any other type of expense that we're incurring because we're saying that we're at the point where we either hire a teacher or we don't, or we spend money on something else. We've not at this point ever said we're not going to hire a teacher because of finances. So I think it's a little bit of a different discussion. I think, you know, we, one of the things that I always ask when we come in to have the department heads present what they need for the budgeting, part of it is to give all of us an opportunity to look the department head in the face and say, is this what you need? And I think I specifically asked every one of them. I think it took me three years to realize I should ask that question. But to ask them to say, are you sure this is what you're telling us you need? And at no point did any of them come in and say, well, I sure like to be able to backfill that position. They didn't. So, and I, I'd appreciate it if they did, but they didn't. So I think in that circumstance, that may be different. We'd have to kind of view this particular proposal from a different light if that was the case. But we haven't gotten to that point yet. So, um, and then the last thing I would just say is that, look, the highest and best use of Colin's time, I don't think is doing everything that necessarily we've been having him do. And I think that we won't have a whole lot of sympathy or patience for when there's things that have to do with HR or the board meetings itself aren't getting done if we, you know, give the feedback that, hey, don't, you know, we don't think this is a good, good idea for you to do that. I think we, then we sort of own the idea that the professional that we've hired is standing here saying, we need this help or we're not going to, we might not be able to get everything done that we need to get done. I think the last point that I would make is that I appreciate the fact that Ethan, and he's here today, made the point of coming here in the last meeting. And I think every time I see him tells me. But it's also something that's reinforced by Colin. And I think as a board, we have to be sensitive with the fact that two of the very senior people that we hold responsible for making sure that we have not only a staff, but the best staff here have come to us and said to us, people are going to become a very critical asset here. They already are, but they're going to become a critical shortage asset here. That, you know, teachers are, it's getting thin in the teaching profession. And I think even little things like putting off teachers for their terms and, and conditions or anything else that has to do with FMLA. I can be honest with you, having spent 35 years in the Army, not getting very responsive personnel assistance at some times, definitely made me take a step back and say, should I keep doing this? And I don't think that we want, I think we want to be forward-thinking. We want to make sure that we plan for the fact that we need to take care of the people that we have and also make sure that we're as aggressive as we can be about backfilling the people that we might lose for whatever reason, whether it's, you know, retirements or people finding other opportunities or whatever the case may be. And it's going to get more challenging, not less challenging, based on everything that we've, we've heard so far. And that, like I said, that both the two senior professionals that we've, we have on staff to, to give us that feedback are telling us. So those would be my kind of, my, my couple of points. I think just to reiterate, Colin has kind of the authority to sort of manage this within, but his point was to come here and be a little bit collaborative and, and give us an opportunity to get some feedback. So it's not necessarily something we need to vote on, but I think just make sure that we give him our best advice and, and, and look for him to make the best decisions going forward on it.
All right. All right. If there's any, any other questions, comments? I don't want to cut anybody off.
Mike?
Yes.
I appreciate all of that, obviously, as being an educator. Teachers, we like, we like things done in a timely manner and certainly. I think my point is, and again, Colin, I, I understand this is your decision. This is, and, and certainly if that's what you feel is necessary, you know, of course, I would support that. I think the point I'm trying to make is, and, and I, I certainly don't need the, I certainly don't need the numbers for the students, um, class sizes. I, I trust that, that they did, did not go up a significant amount. I, I, I would, I, I know the staff and I, I know that wouldn't probably go over so well. So, um, you know, being children, uh, students being first, obviously. So I think the point I'm trying, was trying to make really is, is that, again, and I wasn't part of the budget process. I just, um, you know, I, I, I think we need to be, again, very careful in our perception. You know, it, I, I did see the resignation letter from the, the, the person who did resign. And it was pretty clear that the, you know, the position was overwhelming. So again, I, I just feel like moving forward, I, I just want to make sure that we're very transparent with those, those, you know, the funds and how we're using them is all.
That's fair. Okay. All right. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on. 12.7, which is a first read of some policies here. 52.15, which is the student dress, which is enclosure 12.7A.
So I'll just start off just by reminding board members there are two opportunities for policies to be brought to board meetings. So there's, there's, tonight, these are first readings of both these policies. The board won't adopt or make a motion to adopt anything tonight. It's an opportunity for the board to ask questions, make commentary about the policy, policies that are being presented. I'll do my best to answer any of the questions board members may have. And if I don't have a specific answer, then I'll make note of it and get back to all board members with, with the information that's being requested. The other thing that I'll, I'll, I'll mention is that the Board of Education approves policies. Okay? The Board of Education does not approve what are known as administrative regulations that are associated with policies. With that being said, for the three, the first one, the first one on student dress does not have any administrative regulations, but the other three do. And I included, I wanted to include those changes to the administrative regulations, even though it's not within the board's responsibilities to, to, to make, to have those be a part of the approval process. So that's just, I think, an important thing that I wanted to make mention of. So I, I certainly, again, am, am open to feedback and, and ideas for any of these policies. I'll give a context for the student dress one. You'll see that the, the, the recommended policy coming out of the policy subcommittee is completely revamping this. The, the red line version of this particular policy, the, the text in red really primarily came from another school district that had done some, their due diligence to make some policy changes to their student dress policy. And it was recommended that we look at this particular policy from the other school district and we consider the language from that. And we also looked at some, another outside organization, and I'm blanking on the name of it. And I'm looking at Heather, the-
Oregon now?
Oregon now, thank you so much. And where we had looked at some other dress language, dress policy language related to students as well. But this has been reviewed by the policy subcommittee as well as some other board members who had a vested interest in, in this particular policy. And I can certainly entertain any questions or hear any concerns that board members may have.
So I generally try to open it up to everybody first and before I shoot any comments out. But I'm, I'm, I'm going to think I'm going to reserve that portion for the initial, for that, that, that same process for the initial portion. I'm not really convinced I'm either on board or not on board with the dress code. I've read it. I think it's important over the course of the next couple of months, since we won't meet again until August, to get some feedback. I mean, it's out there now. It's, it's been made part of the agenda. It's an opportunity for all of the stakeholders within the region to have an opportunity to take a look at it. And I'm sure that whether it's through public comment or emails or whatever, we'll get some feedback. And I think that's, that's probably relevant. And it's not also not probably primarily within my, uh, my experience base to have a strong opinion on most of what's on a front. But the one thing that I thought I would probably just discuss is the latter half of this, and I think it's actually the last paragraph in here. The only thing that I wanted to share about that, and this is, it discusses something along the lines of health and safety protocols. It addresses things such as compliance with protocols, such as wearing a mask, maybe mandatory. I want to throw a couple, I want to throw something out. I, I don't think that I agree that this paragraph should live within our policy only because, to give you some context, over the last year, having been the, at least the board chair for the tail end of the pandemic and, and certainly as we transitioned back to kind of normal operations, I want to make sure everybody understands what happened during that timeframe as it relates to something, to, to this kind of situation. We are obligated as a board to comply with the laws, which also equates to the executive orders of the, the governor and the state of Connecticut. And so by virtue of the executive order that was passed and then, or that was, that was handed down and then through our health district's requirements, that's how the masks being worn in the buildings and according to the protocols that they did, that's how that evolved to be required here. And that is also how we evolved to not having it be required here anymore was because the governor and the health district had given out different directions that we didn't have to do. And so at no point did the board make a decision or a vote to wear masks or comply with any particular protocol. And when it was over and we were reverting back to not, we didn't make a decision to do that either because we had never made a decision in the first place. So I think it's maybe redundant at a minimum and maybe not constructive at a maximum to put ourselves into a circumstance where we're almost taking on the responsibility of making decisions that are, I would argue, outside of our purview, outside of our experience base and, and frankly, not really our decision in the first place. So I don't, like I said, I, I just think that that piece is already covered by the fact that we're going to be required to follow state law and the governor's directions and the public health directives anyway. So that's my two cents on that one piece. I think we'd be creating a new problem for ourselves that we don't have and that we aren't going to really have any control over down the road. You know, whether it's masks, mittens or scarves, whatever it is that, you know, the next, you know, terrible emergency presents itself with, we're probably just going to be in, we're going to be in the mode where we're following the, the laws and the guidelines and requirements.
If you don't mind, I, so I could, I just, I would say that the integrity of the policy would not be compromised in any way, shape or form by eliminating that last paragraph that alludes to, to masking. I completely concur with, with the chair. We would, we would fall into, we would want, we would need to comply with any type of governmental exertion of authority, regardless of whether it's in our policy or not. And so, you know, that's one of the things that I say to board members, and, and I have to say this to parents at times as well, when we talk about policies, is if legislative changes have taken place or government has given orders that conflict with policy language, we have to do what the new updated legislation says or what the governors, or the government orders would be regardless of what it is. So just, just, I wanted the board to know that removing this from an administrative standpoint would not be problematic in any way, shape or form.
Yes, please.
I agree with possibly removing it, but I do think we should have something in there. We are God forbid, we do have to go back to wearing masks, that the kids don't wear inappropriate stuff on their masks because I know that you can make your own mask, people can, yeah. I mean, people make their own masks sometimes and they could put inappropriate stuff on them. So I don't know, I mean, hopefully we never have to go back to masks again, but.
Okay, that's fair. Sue?
Yep. Thank you for letting me speak. So I agree with pulling that statement out. I, I don't think that it really makes sense to have that in a board policy. So I, I definitely agree with you, Mike, on that piece. And the other piece, you know, with all of these policies, these seem like they're very important policies. And I'd like to have a little bit more time to review them, reflect and provide constructive feedback appropriately. So, um, I, I think I'll probably hold off on any other comments right now and maybe follow up with the policy chair, um, on any comments that I have. But I definitely feel like this is, these three are, or these four are extremely important. I'd like more time to review them all. I'd like more time to review them all.
I don't disagree, Joe, with what you're saying, but I almost wonder, I sort of feel like the, whatever, whatever shape or form the rest of the policy takes, it talks about specifically things that are inappropriate. And I mean, maybe we need to, you know, be more specific about.
Just treat it the same as like a T-shirt.
I agree with that. We could probably expand the language a little bit to cover any, anything that you wear. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any other comments, concerns? So, just the first reading, we're not, yeah, go ahead, Eric.
Maybe just to let the board know the process that the subcommittee went through, you know, which was, I'm going to say significant. We were lucky enough to have the assistant principal, Chris.
Yes.
Chris attend. And we were, so we were able to ask if this policy would be something that would be, would be, well, sort of acceptable to our principals and assistant principals, so that, and teachers and staff, so that they wouldn't be caught in a bind as fashion police. And it's not a minor item. And we talked a little bit before about challenges to retaining staff in the future. And if the staff feels like they're responsible for being fashion police, that could, that could also, and we got some assurance on that. And I'm assuming that he represents, you know, the teaching staff when he says that. Another thing, and then, and Chris brought this up, is that it's very easy to accidentally create a dress code policy that is discriminatory. So, if it comes down heavy on girls and doesn't come down heavy on boards, for example, that's a discriminatory practice, and we've got to stay away from that. There's a lot of layers to that that we considered. And then, another thing is that, as Sue was saying, you know, this is a policy for all the board members to look at, because it's a policy that I think would benefit from having the various angles of people's perspective. So, we sorted through questions like, can people wear a hat? Can people wear a coat if they're cold? Remember, we went through a lot, a lot of detail with all that stuff. And if we were even to look at what we have here on the second page, the middle, the first bullet says, sunglasses may not be worn in the school building. Well, someone on the board could say, you know, geez, you know, there are instances when, for student health, that sunglasses might be required. You know, those are reasonable questions. Those are reasonable angles to come from. So, this has been, in my view, and I don't speak for the entire subcommittee, but only in my view, this is an incredibly tricky policy. And I feel it would benefit from everyone taking a good look at it and just applying your own personal logic as to what appears to be logical and common sense and what doesn't, and make your comments known. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to minimize anything. I think, it's hard to writing the policy period, but then writing hard policies that have to be written is doubly hard. So, this, I agree, this is a sensitive subject. It can be, you know, honestly, I look at this and think, how would my youngest manipulate this to conflict with whatever you guys, whatever 18,000 scenarios you guys went through? I'm not sure I agree or disagree with what's been on the front, but to Sue's point, I'd like to read through it and think about it a little bit more. I think what I would just ask is, is there any, as it stands right now, any other feedback, anything else that anybody feels like, based on this first reading, they want to share with the group? Okay, let's move on to the next one.
So, the next policy is 5112. It's currently called school attendance. We really, you'll know, really, the most significant change from a policy standpoint is we're changing it to student attendance, truancy, and chronic absenteeism, which aligns with what it should be titled. And really, there's not any changes to the policy, per se, with the exception of the name and the fact that one of the legal references is Public Act number 2247, which came into existence a few years ago. And really, the substantive changes are a part of the regulations, not the particular policy. And so, I'll just quickly look through it. And again, you know, it has language about students being able to take mental health wellness days. It has language about students, what definitions of truancy are. It has changes related to, again, more truancy, more truancy language. And again, going back and giving more language, saying that we will comply with any guidance issued by the State Department of Education. And it references, again, Public Act number 22-47. So, you know, again, there's, this is one of those things, and it's why I said what I said in the beginning, which is, the board really looks at approving policy, and you can see this Public Act that came into existence a couple of years ago does drive some regulation changes that we would need to make to be in compliance with current legislation.
So, just to be clear, the policy is essentially the pages one and two.
Correct.
Whereas the administrative regulations, which you were commenting, is the lion's share of kind of the meat of what is the second part. So, really, all we're looking at from a policy perspective is the legal reference and the title change.
Correct.
Okay. But to give us an understanding of what's behind that, is these are, now, are these changes, have you already made these changes in the?
So, I will tell you that we are in compliance with those. Even, it goes back to what I literally just said 10 minutes ago, which is, even if we don't have policy that is current with legislation, we're still required to comply with legislation.
Okay.
Just catching up to the point.
All right. So, any comments regarding 5112? Want to reword the title at all?
It's a mouthful.
Really, oh, it's, it's a mouthful.
Yes.
No? Okay. All right. Let's go on to 5114.
So, 5114, similarly to the last policy that we just discussed, currently, 5114 for our board is, our board policy book is student in-school suspension, suspension and expulsion. And really, it just should be titled student discipline, because that's really what it is about. You'll see that some definitions have changed. Cannabis is defined in there. There's, again, you can kind of go through it and see there's some other language changes related to definitions. It's inclusive now of conduct, not just on school grounds or a student-sponsored activity, but also on student, on school transportation. Again, some language around consequences related to possession of cannabis on school grounds. Again, that's all in compliance with the new laws that's changed around cannabis in the state of Connecticut. Really, there's, it's just, those are the basic changes that we have to the policy itself. Another aspect that has changed is alternative education opportunities for expelled students. You'll see that it does give some updated definitions about what boards are required to do for students who are expelled and what we are required to do for alternative educational opportunities. Students, if they are expelled, are required now to get what's called an individualized learning plan, which basically means that we, as a district, would sit down, we'd look at what the students' needs are, we'd sit down and look at what their courses would be, and we would develop a plan for that student to make sure that during the period of expulsion, we are providing them with an adequate education. A lot of people don't know that if a student is expelled, that the board is still required to provide educational opportunities for that student. So, we want to make sure that that educational opportunity is as comprehensive in meeting that student's needs as we can. Again, I could entertain any questions that board members may have.
Open it up to the board. Go ahead.
Just one of the ones kind of bothers me a little bit. The first page of the deadly weapon one, where it says, "A weapon such as a pellet gun and/or airsoft pistol may constitute as a deadly weapon." I personally believe that we should take out the "may constitute" and just say it does constitute, like, that's not a joking matter. And the "may" is kind of, makes it kind of like a gray area, like, well, and I understand that it has like, how the weapons use, type of projectile. I don't think that should really matter, to be honest. I think if a kid brings an airsoft gun to school, I think that full expulsion, to me. Not like a, oh, well, let's look at, is it soft pellets? Is it hard pellets? That shouldn't matter to me.
So, it's something that I could certainly look into, making a change like that. One of the things that I didn't say, and I should have, so I'm glad that you bring this up, is that, as the board can imagine, the language related to this policy is really firmly rooted in Connecticut general statutes. And so, the thing that I would have to make sure of is that that language change, even though I don't disagree with you in the sense of the severity and the significance of the behavior, we just can't have a policy that is not aligned specifically with what the Connecticut general statute that relates to this. So, I could check on that, and I can let, I could let the board know, but that's just something.
But we can't be more strict than what the state says? Or is it?
I think we can be more strict, we can be less strict.
Yeah, that's, I can find out the answer to that question.
Yeah.
I think to Joe's, to Joe's point, if someone had something that appeared to be a weapon, they could scare people half to death just as well with that as with a real weapon. And so, that's a very serious transgression.
Okay. Any other notes for this first read? Only one thing I wanted to point out, and this may be completely me just reading it wrong, but if you look on page four, item B, it's the red, big red paragraph. I've read that three times now, at least, and I still am not sure that I understand what it says. It says, "A student shall not have greater discipline, punishment, or sanction for the use, sale, or possession of cannabis on school property than a student would face for the use, sale, or possession of alcohol on school property."
So, basically, with the, I'm going to do my best to interpret it, and I think that this is the answer that the attorneys can give, but I will clarify it. But what it's basically saying is, with the legalization of cannabis for purchase and consumption for adults who are 21 years of older in the state of Connecticut, basically, they're saying, if you're going to suspend a kid for 10 days for being in possession of alcohol, or whatever, you can't be more heavy-handed because you believe, as a school or a district, that cannabis is a more significant.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm totally, I'm totally blank. I did, I missed that. I missed the fact that there was the.
The not?
Yeah, no, no. I read this as cannabis twice, not cannabis versus alcohol. Never mind. I'm sorry. Got it. All right. I did read it three times, too. That's pretty sad. Okay. Any other comments on this? All right. Then we'll move on to 550.
I'm going to get there. So, 550 is nondiscrimination students, no title change needed. The title remains the same. But this is, again, and I'll start with this, Joe, just because you, this, the changes in this align with legislation. Basically, we need to keep up with what current legislation is. So, we have things, again, talking about, you know, inclusive of, you know, academic, extracurricular, and school-sponsored activities. It adds some language around definitions of what discrimination is. You could see there's a lot of changes, discrimination is, what harassment is, veteran status, gender identity or expression, had already been, was one of the few, actually, that had already been defined in this previously. Race, domestic violence. It gets into reporting requirements that we have to have as a school district. So, there, you could see, this is one that's vastly different from the one on student attendance, where there's lots of language changes related in order to make sure that our policy is up to date with current legislation. And I can certainly do my best to entertain any questions that board members may have.
I did a little background on this, just to make sure that I was reading this right. And again, when it talks about some of these definitions, like protected class, those are verbatim.
Yes.
From the Connecticut statute. I mean, that's defined in, not only federally, but it's mirrored in Connecticut law, and it's, those are all basically word for word. I don't have any questions. Anybody else? Yes, please.
Quick question. So, there's four policies there. If, when we read through them thoroughly, if we have additional comments, do we send them directly to you?
Touch base with me directly. Absolutely.
Yep. Okay. Anything for 550? All right. Which moves us on to the financials.
All right. If we go to section, or enclosure 12.8A, you'll have the expenditure and revenue report as of May 31, 2023. I'm projecting a net favorable position of $877,943. And I arrive at that figure by taking the net favorable position for expenditures available that was not spent of $997,018. And I take away a projected shortfall in revenue of $119,075, which got us to the 877,943. So, the shortfall in revenue is directly correlated to our excess cost. So, we do a lovely job of managing our high-cost special ed students and their needs. We brought back a couple of students. A couple of students had transitioned away from our school district. So, if we don't spend the money, we don't get the money. So, it goes hand in hand. So, it ebbs and flows throughout the year. So, that was where part of, or the majority of that money is. And the rest of our expenditures are actually, our revenues are coming in a lot higher this year, because I think everybody really has gone back to normal. So, we're getting the building rented out more. We're getting, our interest is higher. Much lovely, much better position than it was last year. Our expenditures, where we're realizing savings right now is salaries due to staff, again, turnover, the benefits that correlate with the staff and/or changes in that, and then, for some reason, supplies. I'm not sure why, but I'll do a more detailed analysis on that when the year closes and report to you guys in August. The capital improvement fund, so as you heard from Kate today when she was speaking, the refrigeration units that were delayed from last summer to this summer will begin, the work's going to begin on June 16, which is this Friday. And then, also, I spoke to the recommendation for the detention pond. So, we already have that. So, because this memo was a little bit earlier this time around, I didn't have that at the time of writing the memo. In addition, we, the DOT project, I cannot close that out as of right now, because we have still yet to receive a check from the state of Connecticut. So, the check is not in the mail. So, once we get that check, hopefully, we can close out the project. The mandatory walkthrough for the athletic field improvement projects, unfortunately, only yielded one prospective bidder. So, we put the, we re-advertised in the newspaper this past Friday. And so, hopefully, I can't remember what date we chose. We're going to have a non-mandatory walkthrough, but I did inform the person who came to our mandatory walkthrough that all the documents are available for his submission when he's ready to do so. And we will have the mandatory bid opening on the 20, not, sorry, the bid opening will be on the 23rd of June. And that's basically that for the expenditure and revenue report. Are there any questions that anyone may have?
I just forgot when the fiscal year ends.
June 30 of 2023.
30th, June 30th. And we're at a net favorable, we think, of 877. And, and just, just thinking ahead here, if we pretended that we were at that number at the end of our fiscal year.
So, we're allowed to keep 2% of our gross budget.
Right. So, that would be, so that would leave another, like, 250 or something we would return.
Correct.
We would return to the towns, unless, of course, something would come up.
Correct. Right. And we're not anticipating. And we're not anticipating anything coming up.
What is 2% of our, of that budget?
So it's about 600 and something thousand.
All right, okay, got it. Okay, no, I don't have any questions, any, anybody else, questions for you?
Okay, so moving on to 12.8B. So our policy is lacking in terms of transfers for this time of year, so I always bring May transfers just to have them here. So in your packet, you're going to have 23 journal entries that represent the transfers that happened from our last board meeting all through May, and they total out $185,615.77. And again, if you look on this, the back to backs of that Excel spreadsheet portion of it, I summarized it for you guys instead of looking at all the individual pages. So you can see basically what, um, those transfers are about. So this will require board action, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Relatively low number.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, uh, PPS, the unanticipated student requirement, is that?
Yes, so we had student movement there, so based on the IEP, we needed to.
Okay.
Make some changes.
Um, okay. Any questions for Eva regarding transfers? Anybody online? Nope. Okay, so, uh, at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the appropriation transfers in the amount of $185,615.77 as presented at the Board of Education meeting. Eric makes the motion.
Second.
Gabe seconds it. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll have, uh, actually, we'll do a roll call when we talk about this kind of. Carrie?
She left.
Yep, Joe?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Mike, did you join us? No, Gabe? Thank you, Eric?
Yes.
Uh, Kirsten? And I vote yes as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, so that carries.
Okay, on 12.8C, um, this is where we're going to talk about the capital improvement and capital non recurring reallocation of funds. So this is again, not necessarily transfers, but the same idea. So the board needs to take into account, so again, we're going to look at page two where there's, um, spreadsheets or little cells. So basically you're taking from projects that have avail, available funds and transferring or reallocating those funds to projects that are in need of funds. So we're going to look at capital non recurring first, which is on the left hand side. So, um, because we ordered when we did, um, the feminine hygiene products and, or dispensers that are state mandated came in a lot less. The commercial washer and dryer came in a little bit less, and our baby grand piano actually came in a little bit less. So you have a total of $29,577.74 available to reallocate. So our wrestling mats that we ordered were actually a little bit more in need, we were short there.
Trust.
Right, the shot clock scoreboard actually was a little bit more. I think it's just because supply and demand, everybody needed them right now. The locks for the science room, the bathrooms and the head end rooms, I believe this was because we wanted to do a little bit more. So there's a little bit more rooms that actually ended up. We figured since there was avail, available funds, we might as well knock all the rooms that we can out so that they're all done. And then the repair of the athletic field, because we don't have the money to do all the fields, I figured whatever money was available, we were just going to keep wanting to put in there. But that again, was something that, just based on conversations that I hear the board have. So that's the capital non recurring side of things, the capital improvement side of things, which is on the right, on the right hand side. So the one project that we had that is finally closed out is the locker room HVAC project. There's $20,200 available there. So I would take the available funds and put them into the projects that need them. So the walk-in coolers, um, due to, again, the supply chain issues, they're actually more expensive of $5,285. The detention pond, as was mentioned earlier, came in a little bit higher. So it's $14,500 that's being put there. And the $414.57 can be put into unallocated and it can sit there for, and grow anything that we might need.
Okay.
So that, this also will require board action.
Okay, so open it up, comments, questions? Joe? Anybody in line, questions or comments? Okay, so at this point, I will entertain a motion to approve the reallocation of the capital non recurring funds available from the following projects. From feminine hygiene, $27,599.24. Commercial washer and dryer, $1,344. And baby grand, $634.50. Into wrestling mats, $1,564.32. Shot clock scoreboard, $1,829. Locks, science bathroom, head end room, $12,694.07. And repair of athletic field, $13,490.35. Thank you, Gabe makes the motion, is there a second? Thank you, Joe. We'll do a voice vote, all in favor, I'm sorry, uh, any discussion? Hearing, hearing none, we'll do a voice vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes.
Thank you very much. And so now, oh, sorry.
We've got to do the capital.
Sorry, yep, yep.
No worries. So, uh, similarly, we will, I would entertain a motion to approve the reallocation of the capital improvement, um, say capital improvement project. Project funds available from the following projects. From locker room HVAC, $20,200. Into walk-in coolers, $5,285.43. Detention pond, $14,500. And unallocated capital improvement projects, $414.57. Need them, anybody to make that motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Heather. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on, we got 12.8D, which is the food service monthly sales and expenditure report for May 2023. So we did finally receive, um, our smart fund 2.0 funding for March and April. So that gave a good influx into our current position. We are currently reflecting a loss of $41,167.44. So if you look at the back, we seem to be trending pretty well in terms of sale service and state reimbursement. So again, we do not have the smart fund 2.0 for May. And then again, I will have better information or a more complete picture at the August meeting when we have all of June's numbers. Does anyone have any questions in regard to food service?
Anyone? Nope.
Okay, so hearing none, 12.8, which is the, um, student activity reports for both the high school and the middle school. They balance with, uh, bank statements, so we are in a good position as of May 31st, 2023. Are there any questions in terms of student activities?
Nope.
Okay, so moving on, we got 12.8, cut enough. Mine got cut off, sorry.
Eight F.
Yeah, so the short term investment fund. So we are doing really well here. So for the month of May, we reinvested $1,472.70. The interest rate went from, or the daily, um, rate went from 4.90 on May 1st and it ended at 5.12% on May 31st. Are there any questions that the board may have on short term investment?
Doesn't bode well for property interest rates, but go ahead. Okay.
And that's it for me, so thank you.
All right, awesome, thank you. Which brings us to 13, item 13, and I'm just going to, um, add that at, right now I have 8:50. And we have an executive session today that's full too. So in the interest of trying to manage our time as best we can, I would just ask that as part of the committee reports, that we stick to just the facts and as humanly possible, try to move it along as quickly as we can so we don't breach the 9:30 point and have to have a meeting, a decision on whether or not to continue. That being said, I'll move it over to committee reports and turn it over. I know Mike is not here tonight, um, either Joe or Carrie or Gabe, can one of you just give us a, and is there any high points of the most recent meeting that felt like we need to talk about?
No, I'd just say that anything relevant to our last meeting has already been discussed.
Tonight.
Okay. Okay, great. You guys all agree? Okay, finance?
You know, I think that the, the one thing I'd like to talk about is that this 91,000 that we got for technology improvement, you know, these, these, getting, getting money like this is, is, is a wonderful thing. And my experience has been, I can't speak to this specific case, but my experience has been that in most years, either for towns or for school systems, or sometimes both, there will be money available somewhere, but it has to be recognized. People have to take it seriously, be timely, uh, answer questions that, that need to be answered, follow up as need be in order to get these things done. And in this particular case, you know, we, this was something that we've been chipping away at. You know, it was, oh, let's buy one this year, let's buy two this year, right? Because we don't want to overburden the, our, our taxpayers. Now, we're able to complete this tax, this, this task and, um, and with, with no, uh, property tax burden on, on our, on our taxpayers. And, you know, it's a beautiful thing, and I just wanted to, you know, emphasize that.
Hey, just to piggyback on that, I, when, when, um, our team, whether it's the business management team or whoever is all involved, when, uh, when we, when we don't manage money very well and it costs us, we're definitely going to bring that up. So I really appreciate the fact that when, I think by my math right now, I think, what was the, what was the grant that we got? Projects grant?
For the HVAC?
Oh, SP.
400, 400 something. 460ish, something like that.
Over 500 and some other.
Almost 500, 91,000 for this, and then we also got the 25 grand in, for salad bars or whatever. So I mean, in my mind, we're, you know, plus, we're on the plus side of $600,000 worth of grant money. And I think you can't, to, to your point, Eric, you can't walk away and say that at the end of the day, it's folks like Eva and, and Colin and everybody else on that, that team that chases that stuff for us and, and does all the things that are necessary to make us even in the running to get that money, not so. 100% totally appreciate everything you guys are doing for that. Ted? All right, um, negotiations, I don't think there's anything pending at the point, current point. Policy? I don't think Carrie's available, so we, we touched on it. Yeah, we touched on a lot of policy, okay. Program, Mary?
Our June meeting was canceled, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. As far as facilitators are concerned, Eastcon, nothing of any significance that I feel like we need to cover in any depth here. Please feel free to, uh, ask questions if you have any, but nothing that I've, I've noticed is, uh, change or different that we need to discuss. Can't think of anything that's come up either. Okay, which brings us to item 14, which is public comment, again, bear with me. He, Bernando, for Marlboro Community Engagement and attendance at Board of Education, public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedureally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. At this point, is there anyone present who would like to get a public comment? Please, sir.
So it happens until 9:30 is what you're saying.
That is exactly not what I said.
Maybe I need more than three minutes, maybe four.
You're the guy, you're trying to work through the policy holes.
Yes, yes, Ethan Smalley, 22, Marlboro, already a president. It's June.
It's June.
It's June. It's time for thanks and some reflection. So I want to thank the board for all their effort this year, uh, making tough decisions for everybody that walks into this district every day. We appreciate it, on behalf of the teachers. Thank you to the superintendent. I, I think we've worked well together this year, we've got a great rapport, um, honest and open and always some respectful conversation and dialogue no matter what the topic is, so I appreciate that. I extend that same sentiment to our building administrators. I appreciate their time and effort, people services, athletic director, um, it does take a village. Custodians, powers, non cert, everybody, it, it, it does take a village. And we should really celebrate the fact that we can have respectful and open dialogue and disagree and agree most of the time. And still trust that everyone's here to do the right thing. I do appreciate it. I do want to comment on the presentation tonight, that was fantastic. Uh, I, I teach in this building, I know what these kids do, but I'm still impressed every time I hear it. I know you asked the question, why did you take this course? And I'm going to speak for them, and I think they'll agree, there was one thing they forgot to mention. They take that course because of Mr. Bankrott. They do. His reputation is unmatched in this district. He is excited about EMT and cert. He's, he loves getting the kids volunteering. The state needs to get him involved in teacher recruitment, if he can raise a number of EMTs in the state of Connecticut, he can raise a number of teachers in the state of Connecticut. He gets those kids excited, um, and it's really a credit to, to who he is as a teacher. Superintendent and I did talk when he first talked about his retirement, like, well, how are we going to replace Paul? What are we going to do? I think we found someone, but, um, we will never replace Paul. He built that program from the ground up and, and it's evident here. One thing I do, and another thing I want to mention about that program, as, as I was sitting there, what makes that program successful is that it challenges the students and there's a high level of expectations. There's a high level of student expectations, there's a high level of academic expectations, there's a high level of student performance, there's buy-in, there's value that the students see in the program. And I would like us all to just think about how we can bring that same attitude to the rest of RAM. COVID, I think, really changed, um, what we do here in schools. And I think it was important to recognize the impact COVID had on kids. But I think we've fallen behind, and I think we do need to reevaluate and look at where can we raise the standards for RAM student behavior? Where can we raise the standards for RAM student academics? Where can we raise the standards for student integrity, both academic and personally? And I think to get back to where we were before COVID, we're going to have to start asking some of those questions. Where can we incorporate those high standards that are held in that cert class? And apply them to, you know, now that we're a little bit more down the road from COVID, I think we can do that. At the evening of the arts, we did talk briefly about teacher recruitment and retention, I got to mention it again. And about five minutes after we talked, I ran up to my room to grab something and I quickly made a little list of some of the things that, that teachers are really struggling with. And coincidentally, when you were talking about policy, you touched on, on three of them. Dress code, um, what was the other two? I wrote it down.
Attendance and student.
Attendance and, uh, student behavior. And I know your policy might have just been in verbiage, looking at language. But those are some of the things that, uh, I don't want to say you're making teachers lead, but those are the things that make the job frustrating. And I appreciate Mr. Stink's comments about how these policies end up falling on teachers. You know, we don't want to be the dress police, we don't want to be the behavior police, we don't want to be the, you know, the, having to have those conversations while we're supposed to be teaching. That makes it very difficult. I would use the analogy, as the superintendent said, you know, you pay him to be the superintendent, not to be doing administrative duties. You pay the teachers to be teaching. And to be an effective teacher, you cannot be spending 20 minutes trying to control a student to take their hat off or take their earbuds out. And, and that's, I don't want to say it's happening everywhere, but it, it happens here. And it happens a lot, and that's what frustrates teachers. So a hard look at those policies are fantastic, and, and how do we express those policies to the students, I think is even more important. Unfortunately, it didn't hit the number one frustration of teachers. And it's not salary, but I bet you could guess what it is. Anybody want to guess? Cell phones, cell phones. So if there's a policy committee on cell phones, the cell phone policy, I would love to. to get your ear on that and how it really is burdening and frustrating teachers in classrooms during times when they're supposed to be doing instruction. So I appreciate that. I hope everyone has a restful summer, again, thanks for all the work you did. I hope that we can, there were some tough times this year, I think we made some great changes, we have some great momentum of change, and I hope we don't just fall back over the summer, and, you know, it deserves to relax, but I hope we can pick it up in September and keep that momentum going for some of the changes we had, especially around DEI, we did great work since the beginning of the year, and I know we can, teachers are looking forward to advance that as we come back after the summer breaks. Enjoy your summers, be safe, and I'll be forward to seeing everyone at graduation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone online that would like to present public comment?
I have more than three minutes, five questions, but I do have half an hour left.
Anyway, fair. All right, hearing none, that moves us on to item 15, informational items, anything of note, Colin?
So, I'll just echo Mr. Spinnelli, so promotion ceremony on Thursday morning at 8 o'clock for the middle school, and graduation on Thursday evening, those are the significant things, and summer vacation for some of us, for, for some fortunate people, starts on Friday, those are the big calendar events.
Okay. All right, which brings us to, any questions from the board? Which brings us to item 16, which is the executive session, which is 16.1, which is a discussion of the superintendent's evaluation and review, discussion of the following non-affiliated employment contracts, our employee contracts, building substitutes, assistant, speech and language pathologist, administrative assistants to building principals, IT technician, data systems, and, is that the last case?
No.
Uh.
Technician.
Oh, technician, occupational therapist, directors of accounting, facilities and IT and communication, business manager and superintendent. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to go into an executive session for the purposes of discussing the superintendent's evaluation and the 2023, 2024 non affiliated employee contracts. Furthermore, I move to invite the superintendent, Colin McComer, into the executive session. Thank you, Gabe, is there a second?
Second.
Heather beat you to it.
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote.
I have one, just one discussion, I don't have the link, I don't think, to get in.
Okay.
We'll get it to you.
We'll get it to you right now.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Anybody else need it?
Susan, I think it's on the agenda, I think.
All right, Eric, Eric's sending it right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, hearing no other discussion, we'll have a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that passes, and we move into executive session.